So, we have three here, so hopefully Councilmember Winn will join us shortly. And we did hear that Councilmember O'Donnell said that she would not be able to join us. She told us that last week. So, I have a few items here on our workshop agenda. Just a few things kind of get updated. It's a good chance for us to have some good conversation. The first thing is Public Works. And the reason why this is on is Ann is new, still relatively new, and came just about the time we were finishing up budget. So, you know, when we went through the budget, we had told her, "That department, here's the things that we're going to budget for you to purchase this year." And we just thought it'd be a good idea for Ann to come and talk with us, share kind of where she's at with that process, and just because those are some things that'll be coming before us as council here in the near future. So, just turn it right over to Ann first to talk a little bit about her 2016 capital equipment improvements.
All right. Some of the things that we're planning on, you guys all got the spreadsheet? And I can certainly answer any questions without me. Starting off with the safety surfacing in Bel Air Park. That was put in for $30,000, and it was actually recommended that we do that. Bel Air Park currently has a foam-type safety surfacing in there now. It's deteriorating. We did find out just in the past week that for about $4,000 to $5,000, we can remove the very top coating of that safety surfacing and replace it without doing the whole system.
Nice.
So, woohoo.
Yeah, that's a-
That's a big savings right there.
Fantastic.
So, you can just cross that one right off of your list.
So, you said you could work it down and clean it up for $5,000?
Right.
There's some other surface that we could put in place of that that's better?
Not, I mean, there's, I don't, I wouldn't say better. There's different options. You could go with a field turf type footing type surfacing, but I don't know if that's really any better than what we've got out there. What we have is, out there's fairly standard in the industry, and it's-
You're comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it.
All right.
Yep, and it's-
And you just saved $25,000 right off the bat, so-
She can use that for something else.
Yeah. And it does meet all the insurance requirements for the safety surfacing. The safety surfacing in Central Park, which is scheduled for 2017, I don't know if we really need that. Central Park currently, it is, it's got like a pea gravel type surfacing in there right now. It is not ADA compliant. However, we have not had any complaints about it being ADA compliant. Insurance is fine with it. We've got enough depth to meet the insurance ratings. So, my recommendation would be, we just hold off on that until we, if we start receiving complaints, then we can put it back in the budget and get that taken care of. There's other parks around that people can use.
Where's that located? This is the park up here. I thought it was all grass with the swings and-
The Central Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is right over here.
And there is a gravel, pea gravel?
Yeah, it's called BD2. It's a little bit larger particle size than sand.
Okay.
It's not quite a gravel, but it doesn't compact like sand does. And so, because of that, there's less weeds that grow up through it.
Okay, all right. And that is up in that area where the-
Yes.
I just had it walk through it, that's all.
Right, yep.
I can just ask a question.
Sure.
I'm all about saving money, but I'm also all about giving opportunities to everybody.
Right.
And so, I have a little concern when you say not ADA compliant, but I know, I mean, not every park has to be ADA compliant. I guess I've got my PR hat on now. I don't want someone to come and say, "Oh, Bel Air doesn't offer or didn't have that."
Sure.
And then we're fixing the problem after we've gotten a negative hit, so-
Because it was, the park was installed prior to the requirements that it had to be. So, if we ever went in and did any major upgrades to the park, put in new equipment, then we would have to upgrade the surfacing at that time. But at this point, we're not required to. We certainly can.
So, you're saying it's grandfathered in more or less?
Yes, yes.
And we do have ADA available parks?
Yes.
Park, okay.
Yes, the Bel Air Park is ADA.
Wonderful.
And then the $30,000, it's probably going to be more like $40,000 to $50,000, because you have to put in drainage, and then you have to put in a concrete pad, and then you have to put the surfacing on top.
So, just cross that off for 2017.
Yes, yep.
We slide well anyway.
Yep. The two mowers, X-Mark and the Land Pride mowers, we rotate those mowers in and out. They're used pretty much every day during the summer. And so, we want to make sure that they're in very good condition. We do have a maintenance program where every Friday during the season, we go in and do a visual inspection head to toe. Are the belts in good shape? Are, is oil levels, everything? Make sure they're in tip-top shape for running to try and prevent issues. But we like to rotate through those about every five to seven years to make sure that we've got the best equipment to get the job done efficiently.
So happy to hear you say that, I really am, because-
We've talked about it a long time.
Having been trucking, you know, if you have to, you have to inspect on a regular basis and replace them.
And that's a credit to Dave Liker. I mean, he instituted that maintenance program.
Oh, he did, okay.
So, he's, that's, I have to plug him because that's all him.
Okay.
But as soon as he got on board, he started making sure equipment was maintained. So, that's why you guys are going to see some bills coming through for maintenance. Some of it hasn't been done for a long time, and so, we're trying to catch up.
And that was part of when, again, you know, when Michelle kind of worked with the departments, what, a year ago was it? And put this plan together. That's all part of this plan. It had exactly what Councilmember O'Donnell was saying, and taking care of the things before.
Very, very important. And we do get very good trade-in value on those mowers because we take good care of them. But they are, two of them are getting due for replacement. The club car with snowplow, it's getting old. I know we've had it for several years. It's just worn out. It needs to be replaced. We use that all the time. We use it for trimming trees, to get the tree trunk or limbs down for disposal, because it's got a dump box on it. Mulching, we just back right up against the tree or the area and dump the mulch. Emptying garbage cans in parks, applying chemicals, we just put the chemicals in the back and drive through. You can get about a mile of ditch in 10, 15 minutes, because you just drive right along. So, that'll be coming up.
So, 2019 is going to be too late. You want to move that up to this year?
No, I think we're good with 2019.
Really, so, okay.
It definitely doesn't need to be in 2016, but just looking towards the future. And as Dave and I start working together, and we both get familiar with the requirements and the equipment, or at least I get familiar, things will be shifting around. But this is where things stand right now. And as we know, vehicles break, equipment breaks at the most inopportune times. So, moving down to the Equipment Reserve Fund schedule, that '99 Ford New Hall and Tractor, that's already been replaced. It broke, and so, we had to take care of it, because that's what we use our big rotary mower with. Didn't have anything else.
That was last year.
That was, yep, that was last year, 2015. The Bobcat Skid Loader, it's, the existing one's getting old and worn. We use that all the time for loading and unloading. Betty and Ramona, it does have asphalt zipper attachment that we can use with it. We actually, we do have one in stock or at the shop.
Cool.
It's small.
I don't care.
But we use it, so-
All right.
Wonderful.
We do have one of those.
You can get that old concrete out and grind it up and use it someplace else.
Yeah.
Concrete and black top on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, I like that.
So, then, when we're looking at getting a new skid steer in 2018, make sure that it still has the capabilities to attach to that.
Cool.
And then the dump truck with the plow and spreader, the one that we have now is starting to show its age. So, it's, just have it plugged in for 2019 to replace, and that's a sizable sum, but it is a large piece of equipment.
How old is the one we have now, roughly?
I-
10 years, less?
We've got at least two. We may have three.
Okay.
But they're all pretty old. I don't have those years on me.
That's okay.
But I can certainly get those to you guys.
You don't have to do it. I just, you know, roughly 10 years for a truck is a long time.
And we've got 20 years written down here, haven't we?
I'm thinking it's older than that.
It's pretty old. It is, okay.
I'm thinking 20 years.
I think we brought that over at the old building.
Because we've got one that we bought from the state, which was already pretty old just a couple of years ago. And I'm, they've got different names for them, so I'm still trying to figure out which ones which.
Well, trucks that run every day, you know, travel the country 10 years is a long time, but at least don't travel every day.
No, they don't.
But still, I understand the wear and tear.
And then the 3/4 ton pickup to replace the Colorado, it will also replace the Ranger. So, we're planning on selling the Colorado and the Ranger on Purple Wave, and that will mostly pay for that new 3/4 ton. So, I wasn't quite sure with budgeting how we wanted to handle that. I just put in the whole cost. And a new one is actually going to be closer to about $35,000 instead of the $20,000. But when we get rid of the other two, then it'll lower that. And then the F-450 dump truck, that will replace the existing. So, we've got two in there, the, a smaller one and a larger one. And then the Caterpillar backhoe, we do have a backhoe currently. It's starting to show its age. There've been a lot, we've been having to do a lot of minor repairs on that. So, that's the big purchase that I would really, really like to see for 2016. What we would like to do on that is to get a few different backhoes in here for trial and seeing, making sure that they're going to meet our needs, and then accept bids for those.
Good.
We had a couple of water main breaks recently, the one over by the fire station, and then the one on 37th Street. And we had Dueling helping us with the fire station, because that didn't have a valve on the fire hydrant lead. So, we had to have them come out and help put the valve on. While they were there doing that, we got the call about the break on 37th Street. So, we took our backhoe over to 37th that started cleaning and started digging out to find the break. And then we had to take Dueling's backhoe over to the shop to help load the truck up with material for the base. So, without having two, you're going to be running back and forth with that slowing-down work, and ours is getting old, needing more maintenance. And if that gets to a point where it just breaks down, we're going to be in big trouble, especially with that line over on 37th Street, so.
But that'll be replaced next year, or is something that's coming here?
I'm wanting to get it replaced, not replaced.
The old backhoe, the-
Not replaced, but add to it.
Because of 37th?
37th Street, yes. That will be getting replaced this year, yep.
So, on the fire hydrant, they did put a meter back on it so they can meter water that the trucks, fire trucks use?
We did not put a meter on it. We usually don't put meters on fire hydrants. We did put a valve in, so we can shut the valve, completely shut the fire hydrant.
But in the past, we've had a meter on there, because they use that for lost water.
Okay.
Because far Cedric County, I'm not sure how that works, does it tie? They don't charge us for the water, but we use it for lost water. And I'm not sure how many years ago, maybe that meter was taken off. But when I was in the water department, we had a meter on there, because they were washing their personal cars and filling up the trucks and the water truck and stuff like that, that I think at that time, Tim and Terry were using that as lost water.
Okay. I will check on that.
Yeah, I think we had one for the inside and filling and stuff. This was an old one. I'm not sure why they were actually using that.
Tim told me that he has requested numerous times that they do not use that, because it's a very, well, it was a very old hydrant. They have a brand-new one right inside, or just right in front of the shop, so I'm-
Well, that's the one that the meter was on, the one in front of the driveway.
Okay.
On that side of the driveway, or that side, I don't know which side it is.
Yeah, this one is towards Dan, or towards Gason.
Yeah.
The one that was recently replaced.
Okay. So, they may not have had a meter on that. But I know there was a meter on one of them, because they were using it for lost water.
Yeah, I think that's the one you were saying at the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can sure check on that.
Talking about water mains, so I was talking to a citizen recently, a couple of days ago, and they said that our water lines come from out west, but at, they say, Three Angels or Four Angels School, and there's a, and someone, and they said there's constant water in the ditch, so it is a leak of some type. And they didn't know whether it was Bel Air's water or someone else's water. And I haven't looked at it, but just a couple of days ago-
I think it's a witch-tail hydrant.
You think it is?
But Three Angels do get water from Bel Air.
They do, okay. Well, there's water in the ditch, and it's been there for a long time, I've heard, is what the person told me.
And sometimes leaks are very, very hard to diagnose unless you get a geyser.
Okay, yes.
We did have a report on that, on the 37th Street line, that there was just a puddle, just a damp area.
Sure.
And we were keeping an eye on it, but it wasn't growing. There was no bubbling water, so you couldn't really tell.
Yeah, yeah, just spend a little time and work and effort to replace it. Once it's going to be replaced in a short period of time.
Right, yeah. And then when it really blew, we got the geyser, then we're out there immediately. But, yeah, leaks are hard to diagnose, but I will definitely-
If you just look into it.
Take a look into it.
I want that water on the other side of Sonic. There's always water in that driveway.
Is there?
But that's not us, it's truck.
I don't like to think like that. I rarely see things like that, but that's just me.
The wheel loader, we still would like one of those, but we'd like to move that past 2020, so into the next cycle, so you can just scratch that one off.
What is it, wheel loader?
Front end loader.
Oh, okay.
Mine didn't have a price on it.
Yeah, that was, it was supposed to get taken off, and it just got masked.
Oh.
And then the sewer camera, Dave and I discussed that a little bit more, and we don't have the staff to really utilize a sewer camera the way it needs to be. In our opinion, it's not worth spending this kind of money on something that's going to sit around. We can call mayor out when we need it, which is very seldom for a lot less expensive. So, that's what we would prefer to do.
Sure, okay.
Appreciate that.
That sounds good.
Just makes fiscal sense. The one thing that's not on here that I want you guys to be aware of, and we're still talking about this, but a brine mixer, you know how Wichita pretreats their roads with the brine?
Yes.
We can, Dave has been researching this, and for about $100,000, which is a lot, we could get entirely equipped for the brine mixer and the tank, and then outfit one of our existing dump trucks to accept the tank. It's a lot of money, so we do need to perform some cost-benefit analysis. Hi, Diane.
Hi.
And see, is it worth it? The thing with that is you can pre-treat the roads, so if we do have ice storms, they're already pre-treated, they can start, the brine would start working right away. With the sand stalt mix that we're currently using, you can't put that down, you can't pre-treat. You've got to put that down afterwards, and that's got to be driven over to actually activate it. So, safety, cost, benefit, so we're still looking into the cost-benefit, but just kind of want to put that on your radar. And then in the bottom table, the Capital Equipment Reserve Schedule, we've got a storage shed in there, which, let's see, for $30,000 for this year. Ty and I had talked about that a little bit. That's intended to be basically a pole barn, so we can park our equipment somewhat inside out of the weather. And we do have room over at the Public Works facility. I know there is plans to move the Public Works facility out to Sunflower, but this would be something that would be beneficial for a future buyer, so it's not something that would just be lost. Then the engineering study dredging Eagle Lake, I forgot to get a price in there. That needs to be done yet this year, too. The last couple of years, Public Works staff has pulled thousands and thousands of dead fish out of Eagle Lake. It's, the lake is not deep enough where this fish can survive over the winter, so it's freezing completely solid.
Oh, no.
So, Dave is pretty sure there's no fish left in the lake.
And didn't, wasn't that stocked at one time with fish?
Yeah.
So, it's kind of foolish to put fish in there if they aren't going to survive.
Yeah, so we need to get an engineering study to see what needs to be done. And then we need to get cost estimates for how much the dredging would cost.
Has it always been too shallow, or is that just recent?
No, I think it's just recently.
Yeah, silting, yeah.
It fills up the bottom.
And what we would do is we would-
It used to be deep.
Yeah, we would start the study up at 45th Street, and then take it down through, to and through Eagle Lake. So, if there's anything that needs to be done with the area of the lake, then we can get that taken care of at the same time. So, that's coming up. I personally don't have any experience with dredging, so what I would do would be to send out an RFP to several consultants and ask them for proposals, and then go from there. But that was in the plan for last year, and it just didn't get done. I'm still trying to get my feet wet and figure out what all needs to be done, so I'd like to do that this year. We had a cost in there before, but it somehow got dropped out, I don't think.
So, what did the staff do with the dead fish that you've gathered there?
Disposed of them somehow.
They'd be good for the community garden, right? Go throw them.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't want to think about this now.
I don't think there was too much dead. It's people came and took them before we stopped stocking it.
Well, it's better if people fish and get them out of there than to have them die.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't have Mrs. Nelson call and tell you that there was a guy going in the bushes?
Oh, yeah, we have that all the time, it's on.
What am I going to do? He'll be that one I get there.
Instead of a security camera.
There you go.
I don't know. And then the security gate, you guys already improved that. We're getting that going in the Public Works facility. And then the salt storage, the final item, about $55,000. We do have a barn that we use for salt storage. The barn is falling apart. Not quite sure how long that's going to last. The guys have been trying to make repairs and prop it up as best they can without spending too much money. That is a priority when we get salt. Well, what we do is, when we know there's an event coming, or there's a forecasted event coming, we'll go get the salt and sand we think we need for the event, bring it to Public Works facility. So, it's there, ready to go, 4:00 in the morning when the guys get here. If there's no event and we just get rain, then the salt dissolves into a sand. So, although no, now, knowing with the plans for moving, eventually moving Public Works out to Sunflower, it's a lot of money to be spending on something that we're not going to use for very long. So, what I'm thinking is, if we do the storage shed, or the pole barn storage shed for equipment, maybe we can take one of the bays and turn it into like a temporary salt storage. And so that-
Like what they do on the Trump hike?
Right. So, we'd have temporary storage. I mean, that's going to take a little bit of working, because ideally, you want it large enough that the truck can back in there and you can work. But if it's just temporary, we can get the backhoe, the front-end loader portion of the backhoe in there, load it up, load it on the truck. It's a little bit more work, but you save your salt. The salt doesn't dissolve.
What's the timetable on getting the facility's management moved to Sunflower?
We don't have any yet. We've got, when they were plating, or working on plating Phase 2, which is on the north side of 53rd, there's a lot that's actually kind of in the middle where it doesn't have frontage on any road. And so, when the engineers were looking at that, they said, you know, it's, what, if you don't do that, you're going to have these real deep lots, which no one wants. And it says, so it's about a five-acre lot. I said, you know what? We could probably use that as the city to, you know, because it's right there in, kind of in the middle of town, basically. We've got all of our equipment and stuff. There's houses right along there, really belongs in an industrial park. And I said, well, then, why don't we just use that as the city? Because we don't need frontage, you know, so we'd just be tucked in behind the other businesses and stuff. But, you know, we're going to have to wait until, it would be off of the street that's going to be constructed, that comes in off of 53rd and then over to Greenwood. So, we'd have to wait until that gets in. And then utilities and stuff. And then, like Ann and I were talking, the drainage work needs to be done, too. So, it just depends on how quickly we start developing that, you know? It could be three years, it could be eight years or something. But like Ann and I were talking, if down the road, even if it's 10 years down the road, I'd hate to spend, you know, $60,000 on an enclosed salt storage place, and then we have to build a new one, and then that doesn't add any value to our current lot, because someone that's going to buy it does not need a salt storage unit.
The pole barn they could use.
Yeah, the pole barn they could use. And so, that's what we were trying to come up with, things that would work well in case we're there for 10 years, but would also, you know, benefit the property, so that we do sell it, then there's an added benefit that we'd receive from that, so.
I'm happy to hear you're using the word pole barn, because that's about the cheapest big structure you can get.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy to hear that.
Yeah. I like that idea, and I like the idea of Public Works having a new, more modern, all-in-one facility.
How many employees do you have now?
About seven, eight.
And you never filled the last employee that left?
Yes, yes.
You had to fill them?
He came back.
What?
He came back?
Joe came back.
Well, good.
Oh, boy.
He was, he was gone for about, what?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks, two, three weeks.
Well, he couldn't stand it with that Bel Air. We're pretty darn good.
People think that's grass is green all in the sky. That's not how it is that way.
Well, that's, that's interesting.
So, how many do you think, do you need to hire more?
We could always use more. I'm not going to turn that down.
The mayor's shaking his head.
I mean, we can always use more with-
Well, I know that somebody wrote, I don't know if it's in your report, or, but they were short, so when we have the ice thing, and I think if you need more employees, we need to budget, or get it out of the budget. I'm not sure how everybody else feels about it, but these roads, you know, I thought when the taxes, when the mill levy was raised years ago, that, I believe, wasn't it you that stated at the town meeting that, I'm putting you on the spot, sorry, that everybody would be cross-trained, and then I read someplace, somebody wrote that they were shorthanded and had to buy the guy's pizza and et cetera and all this stuff, which I don't mind at all, because I used to take hot coffee to them when they were working out on cold nights, if I knew about it, and stuff, and went and got them food at McDonald's, because they, you know, that's not a happy camper time.
Yeah.
When it's the reason out there.
We did, we have done the cross-training, which is working well.
Yes.
Because it used to be Parks was their own department, and they wouldn't help public, even though they were in the same building, they wouldn't help each other. And so, Dave's been doing a great job of really interchanging. So, the Parks guys, they can go out and help put a meter in, the Public Works guys can go mow in the summer, so that's really helped. What we ran into, that was with, when we had the, both those water main breaks, and you had a couple of people that were gone or couldn't come.
We had one that was sick with pink eye. We had one that had, yeah. One that had been given permission, well, he went down to Nebraska for the weekend to visit his sister. That happens. So, we were, we were down, too.
And then we had two breaks at the same night, and so that's why.
Well, I just was concerned that she...
Kind of rains.
They don't have breaks. You don't have enough help. You need somebody else.
We have enough staff that we can get done what we're doing right now. But, we could always use more. There's always lots of, lots of other things that can get done. We, we prioritize to get things taken care of. But, city services are maintained. We make sure, especially in the summer, we did things mowed at least once a week. You know, wire mains are dealt with immediately. We drop everything to get to them.
Are any of your jobs part-time?
No.
Because I know, when you're mowing, sometimes you hire extra help just for the mowing.
We have had a seasonal way in the past. I'm not sure, I don't think that's in the budget for this year, but I'm not sure.
No, because I think what we, I think it was, I think that was when we actually moved to full-time. Because, you know, when you get, a lot of times you get summer, and of course, they need to be eighteen because they're mowing and stuff. So, they're here, you know, typically when college is out. So, we have them for three months. Well, mowing, you know, starts in April and goes till November. And so, they were struggling with, you've got somebody for three months and they're gone. And so, I think that was one that we actually, that's why we have all full-time now, is we went ahead and made that one a full-time position.
Well, do we have it in the budget that if she does want an extra person, she could get it this year?
Um, I, I don't think so.
Because I think we're, we're, we're full.
At the top.
Yeah, as to where we're budgeting for.
Well, as we grow and have more streets all the time, more facilities and places we need to take care of, you're gonna have to have more help.
Well, I feel like if she needs an extra person, we need to find it in the budget this year. Because we don't know what kind of weather we're gonna have. But, if it's not there, it's not there. We can't do anything about it.
Well, we did add a, didn't we add a new one this year?
Yep. Joe had come back, and then we did hire, instead of having a seasonal, we did hire somebody full-time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for this year.
I didn't understand that. I thought you just hired Joe back.
No, we, we hired one extra.
Okay.
Dwayne is doing very good.
Well, I would still prefer, if you feel you need another person, that you need to talk to Todd.
Sure.
Because that's one place I don't wanna be caught short, especially on water breaks.
Anything else for Ann? Well, thank you so much for staying late and sharing this with us. I think it's important as we come down and we make these decisions. Obviously, like I said, we budgeted for things. So, I appreciate you explaining, going down and why some things you won't ask for and some things you will ask for. I, I think that is a very prudent way for us as a governing body to move forward. And it looks like there is money in the budget, you know, for things, the way you've saved to, to do things like the Caterpillar and other things. So, hopefully, that'll come before council in the not-too-distant future.
Next, good morse.
I am the question.
Sure.
If, like in, well, it can't be moved to sixteen. But, some, some of the things that you said, like the wheel loader and stuff like that, can that money be used to hire another person? Being, if, what money she's not gonna use this year?
Because that's in the equipment reserve fund.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, because they're on a separate fund.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't transfer it.
I'm trying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next.
Don't plan to go anyplace else. They'll come after you.
Well, next, bring up Brian Hayes, our Director of Recreation. Everybody's buddy. Here to talk about the use of our recreation facility field. It seems like it comes up since we kind of know what it, you know, what it is the council wants to do as we move forward with this issue. So, we'll turn it over to him.
Well, basically, I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have. This is something that I know you guys had a little bit of discussion last year on. And we went ahead and you guys adopted an agreement with Sunrise. If you've all read my report, this, this agreement goes back before me, back about twenty-one, twenty-two years ago, when the property was bought from Sunrise. And when I took over, basically, there was an agreement where Sunrise would have use of a baseball field. They were instrumental in the city getting the land at a lower price through a contact through their school or congregation. And there was never a written agreement, but it was always a gentleman's agreement or neighborly agreement that, that the city would allow them the use of a baseball field. And that has progressed to the point it is today. There, we all now let them use a softball field. They use the property, the park area for, for track and cross-country teams. And occasionally, a PE team will come over and they'll play ball over there. We do not allow soccer or tackle football on the property because of the maintenance costs. Until now, it's been a very good collaboration. You know, in return, they, they do allow us some parking over on their fields, on their property, right next to two of our fields, which, in the summer, when we've got four, five, six ballgames going on at once, that parking is needed. If that parking wasn't there, we couldn't probably put the cars in our parking lot. They'd be on the streets and the side streets and, you know, quite a height to the field. So, that is a very big benefit of, of this agreement we have with Sunrise. So, without really getting into any more than a report, that's pretty much where we're at today. Any questions you might have? Basically, you guys have a, a copy of last year's agreement, which was only the second year we actually did a formal agreement. Before that, it was kind of just a piece of paper. They gave us dates and times, and we said, yeah, you can do this. No, we, we're doing that, or that kind of thing. Essentially, they, they schedule around our stuff for the most part. Their baseball and softball programs are, you know, pretty much before we start ours. So, they're not putting any of our organized programs out with their, with their baseball and softball teams, so.
So, they use it in the spring, and then we use their parking in the summer?
Basically, they, they'll start about the first of March, and by the first of May, they're done. And we may have a few teams that are practicing before the first of May, but we don't have any organized games or big groups using it until middle of May into, into the first of June. And they're long gone by then.
Well, I thought they were still using, doing football over there.
They'll do football, and we've never allowed that. They've, they've asked, and we have had minimal discussion. But, football practice, day in and day out, tends to tear a football field, a field up, and there's high maintenance costs. And, you know, with, without irrigation on some of our fields and a big budget to put grass down or field turf, we, we have never been able to allow that because of our budget. And same thing with soccer. They, they, they use other areas for their own soccer.
Well, what is it, then, that the neighbors are complaining about? That they think it's football over there?
They, they do have football on their property, right next to the hedgerow in the middle of, by Bel Air Heights. So, they do have football on their property, not on the rec center. And, and they play soccer there, too.
And, you know, when we allowed that, or when the city council did years ago, that was only gonna be for one year. And then, it was only gonna be for two years. But, it's still going on.
Well, that, that's, that's separate from this, yeah.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this agreement that they made with Milk and Honey back in nineteen ninety-five, that's null and void when they put in that first contract, or an agreement.
Which was the year before it last.
Right. So, none of that is, is now anymore. The building is sitting out there. I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it's out there on a field that's got a bunch of black tires thrown around it. And on top of it, the roof and everything, is that their building?
That is their building. They do some stories there. I think they were cleaning some of that up. I don't know where they're at with that project.
And then, the paving lot that they let residents or visitors park on is not paved?
It's got the millings in it.
But, it's in violation.
It's black, it's, it was dirt the last time I went over there.
It's got the reclaimed asphalt, but it's loose, it's loose fill material.
But, it needs to be paved or gravelled, according to our zoning rights.
It needs to be in compliance.
And, and that's the area we do use.
And, you know, this thing, when we talked about this last year in February, I remember, we wanted to have a, there was a blank in here about how much it was gonna cost. And we didn't fill it in at that time, but it was supposed to come back to us in June. And it never did. And I wanna know why that didn't happen, because it was supposed to happen.
Well, what we did was, we, after we, we put this thing together, then we talked about, I think it was one of the workshops, I think it was actually one of the one...
The only one.
The only one you missed.
The only one I ever missed.
Yeah. We talked about, you know, do we wanna do a, a single agreement with Sunrise? Or do we want to do something so that all schools could utilize? You know, ICELE, Resurrection, whomever. Because they have used the facility once in a while as well. And so, we, we ended up meeting with all of the different schools, see if they were interested in being a part of this, and they all said they were. But then, we got, and we were doing that during the fall, putting that together. And then, after our last workshop, then, there was a discussion about, well, do we wanna include all the schools or not? Or do we just want to just, you know, do an agreement with Sunrise? And especially since it's coming up, so that's why we decided, well, we need to get this rolling. And then, we'll deal with the other ones as they, you know, whoever wants to use it, then we'll just enter into agreement with them as well.
But, according to these agreements and with the other school, you're gonna charge them, but not charge Sunrise?
No, that would, again, that would have to come back to the council as to what you'd wanna charge. And it depends on what they wanna use it for as well. No one is good, wants to use it to the extent that Sunrise uses it. So, it would be, you know, on a daily basis, I mean, as a one-time use or something like that. And that would begin, be up to you all to decide how you wanted to treat other schools based on what they wanted to utilize the fields or the rec center for.
Well, I still feel the same way I did when this first came up. I feel like, and I know a lot of other people in town feel this way, too. I feel like the city, the taxpayers in Bel Air are in essence subsidizing a private school. That's a private business. And our tax money is going toward one private school in town. And I know I made the statement when we talked about this before. It's not fair that one school gets all these benefits and all the other schools have to provide their own facilities, have to provide everything they need if their students wanna do any of these activities. And yes, it's right next door, but that still doesn't, in my opinion, make it right for our taxpayers to subsidize one pay-up private school. This doesn't seem right.
I think, going back, remembering those conversations back then, which is why we wanted to open it up, to make sure that other schools, not just one, could use it. You know, the fact, you know, the fact that, that the school Sunrise is using it, then gives Bel Air a service in return, is something, too, to take into account. And that's why I think it came up with, with the agreement. Because like Brian said, you know, it'd just been that, oh, sure, sure, sure. Well, we better get something riding before, you know, legally, which is why that's before us.
Mr. Mayor, what does, what benefit does Bel Air receive? You just said that Bel Air receives a benefit from Sunrise, and I don't.
Well, just what Mr. Hayes spoke, spoke about earlier with the, you know, providing the parking. And will you talk a little bit about what would happen if that parking wasn't right?
The parking is probably the biggest thing. There is area over there, probably about fifty cars parked there. By, by those two fields. And they also park into Sunrise's parking along their buildings. People park over there, too, because it's closer walk from there to two fields as it is the parking lot or the street. So, it does provide a parking outlet.
I'm unaware of the number. I thought it was like five cars.
No, it's, it's considerable. And that's one thing. They, as well as ICELE and Gammon and Resurrection, deliver and allow us to market in their schools. And they pass out printed, printed media for our programs. Other schools do that as well. There is a very minor thing, but to us, sometimes it seems major. They have a burn pile on their property that they allow us to go in there anytime we want to. That saves us wages, that saves us time. We're not having to borrow equipment or trucks to haul it five miles away and, or stockpile it on the property until we have a load that kids could get in or varmints or whatever. We, we got a tree down or a branch down, we take care of it right then and there.
You have a truck, though, right?
We do have a truck. But, we have two staff people. So, what we'll generally do...
You're totally part of full-time.
What, what we'll generally do is wait till we have a truckload, and then we take it over there, when there, when there's time to do it. June and July, is there time to do it? Yeah, when it rains. And then, it's too muddy to get in there. So, the burn pile's not, not a big issue, but it does save us time and manpower that we don't have.
I was unaware of the relationship that began with Sunrise. I hadn't heard that story before. And that is, that's interesting. That changes some viewpoints, because if they were instrumental in getting a lower price for the land that we purchased from them, and they have exceeded to, you know, our request, that, that changes my viewpoint in some ways.
Well, I can tell you, they bought that land from Milk and Honey out of Hutchinson. And to my knowledge, Milk and Honey has nothing to do with Sunrise.
Okay, well, I don't know.
That was back in nineteen ninety-four or somewhere along in there, when they purchased the land to build the rec center.
This is why it's nice to have a historian on our campus who knows these things.
I can check a lot of books, but that's what I found. And I couldn't find any place where, I don't know why they called themselves Milk and Honey. Some people said that they were sisters that had owned that land, moved to Hutchinson. I thought at first they meant Catholic sisters, but they meant sister-sisters. And that fact, I do not know for sure whether they were sisters or not.
Well, I think it's nice, the parking lot is a benefit. I know that Ken Lee was very appreciative of that. I don't have kids in sports over there, so I never had a clue about that. But, then again, that's only a small portion of our seven thousand-plus citizens here in the city of Bel Air. We have a lot of taxpayers that don't use that parking lot at all, ever, for anything. So, it still does not seem right to me for public money to go to a private entity. I mean, you know, it's like public money, when we don't charge anything for it. Everything else we do at the rec center, we charge for. And you know, the rec center is losing money every year. It's a service we provide to our citizens. And so, anything we can do to help balance out the cost-benefit of that is prudent, in my opinion.
I guess my counterthought to that is, if we've got fifty cars parked in there every single day in the summer, and you're able to use, you know, real quick with a drop pile, to me, for them using it two months out of the year when, when it's not being used, you know, with that benefit to the city, I don't know. You talk about the taxpayers, you know, if the taxpayers have fifty more cars that are parked on the street and causing, you know, congestion and all that on different streets and finding a way to get around, I mean, there is that benefit, too. So, I mean, there, there's two sides here. And that's why, again, it goes back to it's good that we're having this discussion. Get it in writing.
And I don't know that it's every day. And when we had our car show out there at our last festival at the rec center, I noticed that all the cars were parked over there along that hedgerow. Now, what are we ever gonna use that land for in between our current parking lot and that hedgerow?
That is an easement that has a eight or a ten-inch water main right there, under that.
But how big is the easement?
It's that, pretty much that whole area. That's where that old road used to be, when the rec center was first built, it was right in there, and it goes all the way.
Not by that hedgerow, it wasn't.
Right next to that hedgerow, that was the second entrance on the backside.
We came in off of Forty-S sixth Street.
I know.
And we turned right at the end of Johnson, at that time's property.
Right, that's right where that road went.
And then it went, it curved.
Right.
It didn't go through that ditch and up by that hedgerow.
It, it turned and came into the parking lot.
Right. And then we woke up one day, and Mr. Johnson put a gate across there and locked us out. So the, and the only reason we gravelled that was to keep that, those big concrete trucks and dump trucks and everything from running on the streets, because Forty-S sixth Street was not paved. So we put gravel on Forty-S sixth Street, and I would like to say, but I'm not sure, we even gravelled his driveway. And then he got upset with some reason and put a gate across and locked them out. So they had to go down Forty-Eighth Street anyway. But to my knowledge, there was never a road back there by that hedgerow across that ditch.
It was on the backside of it.
What do you mean, backside?
Where that little tee ball field was, it was right there. It went through the hedgerow, back where that tree terrace.
Okay, we came off of Forty-S sixth, turned this way, and then went over to the parking lot. I'm talking, she's talking, I think-
That first park, there, there was-
Of the hedgerow that runs over here, and there's a ditch there.
There's not a ditch there anymore.
That's, well, it's a dip, whatever it is.
There's not a ditch there anymore.
It's not there.
Not anymore.
Why can't we dig that up and put a parking lot there?
You know, you don't, do you wanna put a parking lot on top of an eight-inch water main? That water main is about right in the middle of that area. I guess you could, I mean, you do everywhere else.
You're not supposed to, really, but.
But we're talking at a big expense too.
I wanna find out more about that, because, you know, when I looked at that, they parked all those cars on it when we had our, uh, when we had our festival, and it just seems like wasted space, because, you know-
You could probably get another ten feet out of that, probably.
And I don't know how many cars, that would be maybe thirty cars or something like that, where we could add some additional parking on the west side of that parking lot that's already there. And I think that's something we should look into, you know, if parking is such a big deal, but-
And it's, it is just during, during the, you know, May, June, and July months, is when we have parking issues. We built it and they came.
Well, do the other schoo-, will the other schools have free access to-
We do do some things with the other schools, uh, Resurrection, they do some small team things, and we allow them use of the facility.
Without cost?
Uh, without cost. They ran a cross-country meet once that we allowed them, that, you know, they did the special permit thing and had insurance, and that was allowed at no cost. Isley has done multiple field days at the rec center, at no cost. So there's been some special type events with some of our neighboring schools, not everyday seasonal use like, like Sunrise has done in the past.
You mentioned that you, um, do some broadcasting at Gammon and do Jackson as well.
We do Jackson, Gammon, Isley, Chisholm Trail, that's our public schools that we work with, and then ours also Circle, Greenwich.
Oh, uh-huh, sure.
And then private schools is really Resurrection and Sunrise. We used to do some more schools a little farther out, but we did, did some counts, and we weren't getting a whole lot of participation out of the schools, so we decided, you know, is that worth our time and, and money to work with them? So we, we quit some of the schools, but we still do quite a bit of work with those others.
And at no charge, or with charges?
There's no charge. There's a lot of rules and procedures, but there, but there's no charge.
Well, there, um, that, that's a revenue stream, you know, and we're not taking advantage of that, but I definitely think, since Sunrise has been getting all this free service for years, which is, has really made it possible for them to have teams and everything that they wouldn't be able to have otherwise, without that facility right next door, I think all the other schools and churches in town should have the same privileges, because it's not fair to let one have everything and, and not to provide that for everybody else. But again, we need to be prudent, because it's all taxpayer, uh, assets, you know? And you are losing money every year. So.
Any other questions?
No, we've, I think we've pretty well talked about, except for the history, some of the histories at, uh, Councilwoman, fourteen.
Yeah, that's my thing, yeah, the history is interesting.
Well, I think the background stuff should just flat be dropped, because once you make an agreement, that takes away your-
Right. And that's the main thing with just-
Just a handshake or something.
Is it, yeah, okay, you know, we let them use their fields for a couple months, they let us use their parking and help promote our stuff. But, yeah, we let other schools use it too, so.
When we did do the agreement two years ago, it made everything a lot easier, because it was all down, and everybody knew what the expectations were, they knew what we needed from them. They communicated better with us, and it wasn't as taken for granted as, as it was in the past. There was something that, you know, they, they were limited to some of the things they could do. And it's all spelled out.
Well, I, I'm glad that it is now.
And there was a learning curve, both sides, and it's, last year was, was a good year, the first year, there were some bumps, uh, but they, they've been very, they've been very good to work with, and are doing what we ask.
That's good. So would your recommendation be that we continue that for the?
I, I think what, what we have now works, it does, and, uh, it, it tells them what they can do and what they can't do. And, you know, when there's an issue, all I have to do is make the phone call, and it's taken care of.
Just out of curiosity-
I could go along with that, but I still don't like the parking over on their property, and I don't like the vows to use burn, brush, burn pile. And, um, I think their agreement should be, I thought, didn't, when we talked about this before, didn't Allison draw up the same agreement that the other schools would sign also, and it would be at no cost?
If they request, uh-huh.
And we would do that for all schools, not, yeah.
But I just don't think the city should be using their burn, brush, brush and burn pile, when we have one, even if you have to stack it back there by the barn or what that little building is, and Sunrise needs to pave that parking lot that's near those two city fields. 'Cause that's not in compliance.
May I ask, is that property that they play football on, is that contingent with their other property?
That's Sunrise property.
And they bought that at the same time?
They bought that at the same time the rec center was purchased, the rec center property was purchased.
Well, that is a bone of contention with a lot of people in the neighborhood, that they play football out there. But you say that's another, uh, discussion.
So are you comfortable with this on the agenda? Do, or do you want me to make any changes prior to the agenda, or do you, 'cause they're gonna want, what is it, they start in March?
They're, they're gonna want on there in about two or three weeks. They've already given me the dates. There's no games scheduled till April, but they'll wanna start practicing after school, basically as soon as the time changes, but they will, that's when they'll start to really ramp up, but first of March is typically when they start practice after school.
Is there anything you'd like to see changed?
I, I'm comfortable with it the way it is.
Because that's the reason it's good to have it yearly, is because then you only have to put up with something for a year or the remainder of the year. But if we don't know what, you know, what's making you itch, we can't.
I, I get an itch every now and again, when a bottle isn't picked up, or something isn't done, that we have spelled out for them, but I have no problem letting them know, hey, you know, and they have no problem getting out there and fixing it. So, that, that has been good. We didn't have that before.
So essentially-
It wasn't spelled out before.
What it boils down to now is the rec center activities that you plan for the whole city have first choice.
We have first choice.
Then Sunrise has second choice.
That's pretty much it.
And then if any other schools want to do anything, they get the leftovers.
They, they could put in a, a request just like Sunrise could, at the same time-
Do they know this?
Everybody, we, we already have requests coming in for, for the ball fields. We already have it. So basically, right now, we plug our, we plug our dates in, and then we take other dates, and then we plug those in. For Sunrise, their dates that they want are dates, you know, their after-school hours and their, you know, March-April hours. Our other requests that we get from outside groups that aren't involved with our programs, they're usually, they usually come in May, you know, after, after soccer's over, and they're now thinking about baseball. So we do have quite a few teams that request usage of our fields. We do have a way, if they wanna reserve the field, they can do that, and we do charge them for that. We charge them eleven bucks to use it. And, or, they can just drop in and use it as a public park. You know, if it's open, and it's not scheduled, we don't have anything going on there, they use it. Most people choose to do that, 'cause generally, with the kids' teams, we've got six areas they can practice and a lot of green space. Why spend the money when they think, when they know that we can, they can probably get somewhere up there? Uh, we have a, an agreement with a, a local-based team girl softball that aren't affiliated with us. They use the fields a lot in the spring and the summer, and they don't reserve it, 'cause that, they don't, I guess they don't wanna spend the money, but other people do the same. But we also have people that reserve it, and then when they reserve it, we give them a piece of paper that tells them and others that they have paid for this field. And that happens a little bit, but most of the usage is drop-in use.
I can actually speak from experience. Several years ago, uh, Brian and I got to know each other, and I, for some reason, thought it would be a good idea to coach twelve- and fourteen-year-old girls softball, that, remember, we had a practice when out there, and there's another group on there, and Brian comes, no, this is set, and they just moved over. So it is, yeah, that was a long time ago.
I learned something today, uh, that will make your eyes sweep a little bit, I guess, but, um, my office manager coaches, uh, girl softball, and these are girls that are after-
What?
Well, they take this pretty seriously. Her older daughter is, uh, you know, on a, um, a grant at a college kind of thing, from her abilities. The new facility that's been built out there along Ninety-Six and, uh, Greenwich, isn't it? A hundred bucks for two hours' practice.
On their indoor fields.
On their indoor fields. And she said, I don't think that's bad at all, because they have, I think it's twelve or thirteen girls on the team, so she just divides it up, my girl, okay? But, you know, I mean, if, if, and I really, I, I told this to Brian one time, I said, I don't, I don't know how, I never was involved with the rec center, even when my kids were growing up. And of course, that was when it flooded all the time and all kinds of things, too.
They let that fixed.
But, uh, I just never got involved with it. I mean, my kids had other interests that weren't met over there, I guess, so I never had any real usage of it, uh, until later. So, but that floored me, a hundred bucks for two hours.
Whoa.
They gotta pay for that fourteen million dollar facility.
Yeah, and then your facility with the heat and air and lights and stuff.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's where I'm coming from. To me, this is not a good business model, you know? Yes, we're a public entity, and that would be fine if we were giving away things to everybody, but with just one school, one private school, benefits, and it doesn't, it isn't spread for everybody, that, that's the problem I have with it, you know?
But we just said we're going to-
I know.
I mean, it is happening everybody, it's not-
I mean, I'll go along with that, whatever the rest of the council wants to do, but I just don't think it's a good business model, and I don't think it's a good, uh, prudent use of public facilities, I, I will say that.
How much money do we lose each year at the rec center, roughly?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Cool.
I think, I think it's more than that.
That's mostly, that's mostly, that's probably an average, that's mostly for, for salaries. Programs pay for themselves.
We might look into increasing cost for people to use the facility to, you know, inch into that, that hundred thousand, and hopefully sometime in the future, it would be at least break even, but, and I understand that obviously, yes, okay.
You mean on the fees?
I mean on the fees, yeah. I mean, he just said, you know, what, a hundred dollars for two hours? Yeah, we can increase the fees, I think.
We did.
No, 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 no. Well. Yeah, we just did that at our, was it our last meeting?
We just did it at our last meeting, but we didn't-
For non-residents, for non-res-
Right, for non-residents only.
Yeah. But this isn't individual fees, this is for teams and things, is the way I'm understanding the question.
Yeah, so I, I would look into, I, I would like maybe Ty and you to look into matters and, you know, you know, I don't look for anything to happen immediately, or even in a year or two, but eventually.
One, one thing that is included in our budget, which is not included in a lot of rec centers' budgets, is all of our overhead maintenance, ball fields, everything comes out of the rec budget. Unlike other cities where their ball fields and their playgrounds and their maintenance comes out of their parks budget.
Oh, okay.
So, that's one thing that we're a little different, is we're all-inclusive. The rec budget covers everything done on that twenty-two acre lot. So that's one thing that's a little skewed, 'cause a lot of times you'll see a budget, and those ball fields at Edgemore Park are mowed by a, an outside agency, and that field is maintained by the, by the parks crew, and then recreation is a separate budget.
Okay. Well, you know, the city pays for the lights here, pays for electricity at City Hall, pays for the heat, air conditioning. It might be a good idea to consider taking that out, the, the cost that, that you're currently, uh, spending, basically, maybe you put that back on the city or the parks department, or?
Yeah, see, and that's all, that's all budgeted within the rec budget. It's pretty much all inclusive.
Okay, so I was unaware of that, okay.
Only about the only thing that, that we have that really isn't in our budget is some of the IT support and things like that, that's, that's out of the, that's out of the administrative budget, but pretty much everything else that's on that twenty acres is, is one budget.
Well, I don't expect you'll ever be profit-making.
There's not a, there's not a rec center, there's not, there's not a public rec center in America that makes money.
No, and I wouldn't expect that, but I would just like to get it a little bit closer, you know?
Same way with this, pour it full of concrete and let them use it for skate.
Like, something that you said, okay, if we're using outside contractors for maintenance of another park and things like that, you know, we're paying, that, you know, your taxes are paying for that as well.
Outside park he was talking about was on Edgemore, it's not ours.
Oh, well, if there are any that are maintained here, otherwise, I mean, we have little parks and what have you, I don't know who does-
And their subcontractors doing some of the Bel Air work, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the parks- Yeah, and the parks side, true top.
Sure. Well, thank you, Brian.
Good. Thank you for listening to me and-
And Ty, did you get your question answered?
Uh, I-
No, but you did.
Yeah, I, I'll put this on the agenda as it is, unless you want me to make any changes before, and of course, you could-
Just change the date.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Enjoy your evening.
This doesn't have all that stuff in there about the burn thing and the parking and all that, does it?
Yeah, it says, I think on page two, it says, in return from using the, yeah, it's under, let's see, 2, 3, 4, page 2, under 4, compensation, that they agree that they will allow us to use parking and distribute to burn pile and stuff. And, you know, I think if, I think we want to keep that in there so that we can say that, well, if we're not going to charge you, then in return, you're going to do these things for us.
If all of a sudden we-
Yes.
Kenley would not be happy if they lost their parking.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to-
Kenley, remember?
We wouldn't want a gate showing up over there.
He's parking on, on stuff that's not paved.
Well, that's right. We need to talk about compliance at another time.
That's another, yeah.
Yeah. I put that on my list, talk to Keith about.
Yeah, if they're out of compliance, well, I don't think that's Brian's job.
No, and that's why Ty's already said he'll-
Says it with Keith on that one.
Well, let's move on to our third item, which is policies.
Wait a minute, what are we gonna do with this?
It's gonna be on the agenda.
Be on the agenda.
Next, at the council meeting.
Unless you didn't have-
But I agree with you about that burn thing. I think that's, you know, we shouldn't be depending on them for that.
Right. Because we don't take trash over to Resurrection, we don't take brush or anything else to Isley or to Northeast Magnet, and-
Well, I didn't hear that he said he depended on it, just that when there's those times where it's a lot easier, if they're in a super time crunch, they can use it. I don't know the, yeah.
I have a question that maybe Ty might know. A long, long time ago, when there was a recycle committee out here, there was a grant, and with that grant, I can't remember all of the, you know, there was so much money raised for it and so much that the city contributed and what have you, but there was a chipper that was bought. And that chipper sat in the maintenance building over there in the back corner for a long, long time. And it was bought as a portable chipper for storm cleanup and things like that, you know, whenever happened.
I think we still have that. I think they, I'll check, but I thought somebody told me that-
I thought they sold it.
We had a, well, I'll check and make sure.
Yeah.
Because I had to ask them about, every once in a while, when storms come through, you can get grants for that. And I asked them, well, do we need something like that? And I thought, they told me they had one.
Yeah, but it's not very big.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll ask them about that.
They can't do the big trunks.
Well, no, they, you know.
And we're giving Ty a long list, too.
It wasn't for the 2005 ice storm.
Oh, I know, yeah.
But, you know, I mean, like, I had a tree just come down in the wind.
We got a cardboard bender, too, didn't we?
A Baylor, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened to that either.
Huh. I could use that chipper at my house.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna buy one of those, okay.
That was kind of the reason we didn't buy a humongous one, like the-
Right.
The tree companies do.
Yeah.
Was so that it could be pulled behind a pickup or something, you know, and people could put brush out.
They were all excited. I remember that when I was on your board.
That'd be a great attribute for our citizens after a storm, you know? Go down the street.
I think what Diane was suggesting, at least I interpret it that way, is that we could take the chipper, if we have one, over to the recreation center.
Yeah.
And when it's the limb that falls down, put it in, and then we have mulch for something else.
That's kind of where I was thinking.
He can handle it right there, but that's on the backside by that orange shed, orange shed that he has.
Then you are causing pollution, burning things up. We're using something and recycling.
Yeah, I mean, that was the whole reason for doing it, and-
That's good.
I won't name any names, but someone at the Parks Department or the maintenance or what have you at the time didn't like it, and so it sat in the corner for a while.
Well, before Diane gets in trouble.
He got mad at us, obviously. He didn't set up the boxes for us.
So, under policies, and this is great, I mean, this is a great discussion, and I look forward, especially if we have that chipper and we can make that available, fantastic. Let's, two things are under policies for us to go over, and I know we've discussed and tabled both of these more than once. First one is the rules of order. I know that Councilmember McDonald had some changes, and that came back, and Councilmember Becker had some changes, and a lot of the leads basically, you know, use Robert's rules, and we're using it, it's working, but anyway, that's before us tonight, if there's something, is this something that we want to put on the agenda to, do we need to make any changes? What are you guys' thoughts on this?
I've made some marks on my copies here, Mr. Mayor. Under basic principles, on number 2, it says, by majority vote, the body can control its own meeting, and I think it should say something different than that. Not can control, because that implies that it may not want to control, and say, and I think, by majority vote, the body controls its own meeting.
Okay.
And then on number 5, under basic principles, rules of order are always secondary to any applicable local, state, or federal rules. Well, applicable local, to me, means the city of Bel Air, and so, we, you know, we have two, we're saying the same thing twice.
Well, does that get into where, you know, the city charter trumps policy and the state statutes trump city charter, is that, I know there's that hierarchy, is that, I'm just asking, is I'm-
Rules of order are always secondary to any, I think, state or federal laws, and I think you-
So just take out applicable?
Yeah, just take it out. Applicable local, and what else do I have?
You're taking out applicable and local?
Yes.
Okay.
Because local, you know, we are local, we're the ones that make the rules.
Mm-hmm.
On page 2, number H, under 9, under H, decide, no questions, please, my word, this is final, it's overall upon field, but majority vote of the members. Yeah, I think that the mayor, and we talked about this before, should talk, when there's a question of order, I think the mayor should talk with the parliamentarian, and then the mayor and the parliamentarian, you know, the parliamentarian tells the mayor what the applicable rules are and what should happen, and then the mayor comes to the council and, you know, asks for a vote on a particular issue. So I think that, you know, after consulting with the parliamentarian should be placed earlier in that area.
Where is that?
Letter H.
Letter H, under 9, on page 2.
So if you move after consulting with parliamentarian, comma, to decide, any questions, is that?
Yes, yeah, I think the mayor should consult with the parliamentarian.
Okay.
Find out what the parliamentarian's opinion is, and then the mayor brings the question to the council.
And we've had that happen a couple times, yeah.
Yes, we have, yeah.
Okay.
Then under J, on the same page, to refuse to entertain a motion which is clearly frivolous, repetitive, or inappropriate to the question before the assembly. I think, I think it should be removed, because if, for example, I were mayor and I wanted to control this whole situation, I might declare that a member was doing something frivolous or not in agreement with the issue that we're discussing. I think that's pretty obvious, I think we just eliminate that, that the mayor has the power to, if we had a bad mayor, you know, if we had a bad mayor who wanted to control everything, then, then the council itself could say, bring up a motion, have it seconded, and then whatever the issue was, they could take care of that problem. I see you looking.
Yeah, I'm saying, because it says that the, to refuse to entertain a motion.
Yes, if I wanted to, you're mayor, if I wanted to-
So if I don't want to accept your motion?
That's right.
Okay, I see, okay, okay.
If it's frivolous, you could say you're not talking about-
Gotcha, 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 okay, okay.
All right, page 3, look under I, which is at the top of the page, to adjourn a motion at the meeting upon completion of all matters on the agenda.
You mean L?
L, I said I, I'm sorry, my glasses didn't let me read that correctly. Yeah, I think the council adjourns the meeting. See, again, if we had a mayor who wanted to adjourn a meeting and say, okay, the meeting's adjourned, well, then the council said, hey, listen, we haven't talked about these other issues. I don't think the mayor should have the power to adjourn. The mayor has the power to say, I'll entertain a motion-
Right.
-to adjourn, and then we get a second, and then we have a vote, and the council is the one that actually adjourns the meeting.
By a majority.
I can't find where you are.
Right here, right here. Page 3, L.
Page 3, top of the page.
He said I, but he meant L.
Oh, yeah. And that's also not, that's not numbered correctly, is it?
It's under 9. Under 9, yes, numbered correctly.
9L, yeah.
9 on the previous page, continues to the next page.
Yeah, so what did you want to say there in place of that?
That the council, the mayor cannot adjourn the meeting, you know?
Without a majority vote.
Yeah, it has to come to a vote, it has to be a motion, and then it has to be seconded, and then it comes to a vote. Because you could have a mayor that says, oh, I don't want to talk about this anymore, that's adjourned, and that's it. And so he has the power then. So I'm saying that it's the council that has the power to adjourn.
So, majority, majority vote by the council adjourns the meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Which is what we've been doing.
Okay, yes, I'm like, this is in writing.
So it says to adjourn the meeting upon completion of all matters on the agenda.
Yeah, but you could have, but who decides if we-
So you're gonna say the council is to adjourn.
Yeah, there has to be a-
The way it's written, it's just like the mayor says, okay, we're adjourned.
Yes.
We wouldn't have to make a motion, we wouldn't have to vote on it.
Okay, but where do you put in the council does it?
Right after that.
Yeah, majority, majority vote by the council adjourns the meeting.
To adjourn the meeting upon completion of all matters on the agenda.
Yeah, but that's, who decides what, if everything has been contemplated and talked about on the, on the agenda? If the mayor says, I adjourn the meeting, even though members of the council-
Right.
-want to talk more about certain issues, then, you know, that's it, so I'm saying-
I can't just adjourn and say, we're done.
Okay, so you want to change the 2 to the council adjourns?
What? Majority vote by the council adjourn, adjourn the meeting.
Adjourns the meeting.
Adjourns the meeting, sorry.
Actually, the mayor does adjourn the meeting after a majority vote by the council.
But, yeah.
Because then you hit the hammer and you say adjourn.
Right.
Yes, that's right. That's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
The hammer.
So, mayor adjourns the meeting, mayor adjourns the meeting-
We don't give them a hammer.
After-
A motion to adjourn, seconded, and then voted by the majority.
After a majority vote by the council. Okay.
Okay, let's go to page 4, at the very bottom, the last word. It says, procedural motions deal with a process by which some final or formal action is to be determined on a matter of business before the organization. I think strike organization right in city, because we're talking about the city of Bel Air.
And where was that one?
That was at the last word on page 4, very bottom of the page.
C, 3C.
The last word.
See, this is, this came from-
That was just an oversight.
Yeah, it should strike organization and do city, you know? And the same thing on page 5, under E, at the top, that says, calling a question is a procedural motion to terminate further discussion upon the item before the body and to proceed directly to a vote on the pending issue, on a pending matter. So, before the body refers back to an organization, I'm saying, replace body with city, because we're talking about the city of Bel Air.
For the council, city council.
Oh, city council, okay.
Yeah, I think.
Before the, no, 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 upon, before the, before the city. Well, you know, we're the council, and so, yes, if you want to put council on, that's fine, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay.
And do you mind if I add something onto that?
Oh, you can just go right ahead.
I've got a whole bunch of stuff here, but this is right in line with that one. This was left off of that. To be successful, it needs a second and a majority vote in favor. In other words, the mayor can't just call a question all by himself.
Oh, no, no, no.
So that was left off.
Right, I, yeah, Robert's rule said I would need to call a question, but we need a motion, right?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I don't think the mayor calls the question, it's a member of the council that calls the question. If we're talking back and forth, and we're spending a period of time, and a council member thinks that we have covered-
Okay, this, I was thinking this was still under the mayor thing, but it's a procedural motion to terminate further discussion upon the item before the body and to proceed directly to a vote. To be successful, it needs a second and a majority vote.
Yes, right, yes.
Yeah, I can't just call the question, I can go ahead and call the question, but I need to have a majority that votes to say, we're gonna end discussion.
I don't think you can call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be a council member who decides.
I thought I could call, but the council had to vote, a majority vote had to say, we agree.
I think, I think.
It could be either one. As I went through this today, I saw that it can be either the mayor or the council can call the question, but it does need a second and a majority vote, which we don't always do.
Right, right, I mean, I-
I have no problem with that.
Okay, yeah, I just-
That we should.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, it's still on page 5, go to the last one, E, it says, Fifth Amendment. It should be Fourth Amendment. Fourth Amendment deals with personal property rights and several other issues. The Fifth Amendment deals with, in the 50s, they would say, I can't, I don't want to incriminate myself by testimony, so I'm gonna use the Fifth-
Well, the Fifth Amendment is what Bob's rules had.
Wait, 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 hold on, are we talking the Kansas Constitution or the US Constitution?
Oh, I'm talking US Constitution.
I think this refers to the Kansas, does it not?
I think it does refer to the-
Well, let's clarify that.
But Bob's rule said Fifth, and the-
And that goes by the Kansas Constitution.
Oh, it does?
I believe so, I believe so.
It could be, it could be. But, rules applicable to governing bodies when exercising quasi-redundent functions. That's, that's US Constitution as far as I'm concerned.
I thought it was US, too, but I did notice that Bob's rule said the Fifth.
Okay, well, I think that the mayor is right, that it is, refers to the Kansas Constitution, and I think this is talking about the US Constitution. See, First Amendment, free speech issues as to receipt of public comments, that might be part of Bob's, too, it might be the First Amendment in the Kansas Constitution.
Yeah, that was in Bob's, too.
But, you know, I read this, you know, if I were a citizen and I wanted to read all these rules, I would, I would believe that they're referring to the United States Constitution, not the, not the Kansas Constitution.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I would change it to Fourth Amendment, and which would be in compliance with the US Constitution.
Yeah, I'm just gonna clarify, I just looked up real quick, under the, and this is under the LKN, we have the Fifth Amendment, does deal with property rights in the Kansas Constitution.
Kansas Constitution. It's the Fourth Amendment in the US Constitution.
So we leave it the Fifth?
No, I'm gonna recommend we make it the Fourth, because I think anybody reading this is gonna think they're referring to the United States Constitution rather than the Kansas Constitution.
Let's ask Allison about it.
I think before we get into, because I would hate to-
I have no problem with that.
Right, down at the bottom.
You would note here that it's the Fifth Amendment of the Kansas Constitution.
It's said Fifth in Bob's rules, but then the first graphic we had said Fourth, you haven't changed. I don't know if Allison changed. Yeah, I don't know if Allison changed that.
Or just have it spell out that this is, yeah.
And it should be consistent, I would think.
Yes.
You know, if one of them was Kansas, the other one should be Kansas.
Yes, I agree with that.
I would leave it the Fifth Amendment of the Kansas due process.
Okay, if you put in the Kansas Constitution-
Check with Allison, see which is right.
That's an Allison question.
I'm not an attorney, I'm attorney.
I finished my question.
All right. I think all those are-
Okay, I have a bunch now. And I want to say, now, Betty, don't say that. I want to say the first thing I liked about Bob's Rules when I saw them was the way it was formatted. Formatting is very important, and it makes things easier to read and understand. And the way that he had his formatted was beautiful. And that's the first thing that I wanted to address after we had taken Bob's Rules and warped them over into our first draft. All that formatting was taken out, and that was one of the best things about Bob's Rules, because it made it so easy to look things up, so easy to read, and so easy to understand. And I think that's very important. So I suggest that we go back to his formatting, which had everything in bold that was headings, you know? And that, that's just going to make it easier for us to look it up when we want to know something.
Let me just ask for clarification, because we do have, it's bolded, basic principles, too.
No, but this isn't bolded. You see here, this is what was bolded in Bob's Rules. And a lot of these were completely dropped off in that also. The headings were dropped off on each of these. And that's what makes it easy for us to go to this, look up exactly what we want, and find it.
So you want to go back and put a heading for every single one of these?
Yes, that's the way Bob had it. Listen, I have a degree, I have a doctoral degree in instructional design. I understand these things, I've studied them. Science proves this really works, and I think that we should do it just like Bob did. That was the most beautiful thing about that, when you first looked at that document, it was very readable. And so I strongly suggest we do that. And also, his was broken up more. We, for some reason, this whole section that was in his called elaboration of procedural basics, that was just all mushed together, so we've got this big, long list of stuff. But I'll start on the front page and say what I'd like to see changed about this.
Well, do we need to, or do you just want to, I mean, we could just adopt Bob's Rules of Order as they were, I mean, if you're more comfortable with that.
There were some things that, I like Bob's Rules just the way they work, personally. Now, there were some things that were added in here, which were okay. I didn't really, really understand exactly why they were worded, because, I mean, why they were added, because some of this got really wordy.
Do we know how many cities actually use Bob's Rules? Because everybody uses Roberts Rules that I know of, and-
I think there's quite a few, because he's been doing this for the league for quite some time, and he's an expert in this field. The league considers him an expert, that's why he was a speaker at the league last year. And he's done that many times. You know, another thing that I want to share with you, that Bob said, I went to his program that he gave at the league, and he said, "There's one thing we need to understand about this is that the chair of a meeting, or the mayor, whoever it is that's in charge, their sole purpose, their most important purpose in running a meeting is to make sure that every member gets to speak." And he definitely emphasized that. That is the most important function of a leader of a meeting, is to make sure that everybody gets to speak, gets equal time, and that makes it a democratic process. You know, that's the basis of our democratic process. And so, I really like that. And there were several things that, that, I mean, you can see, this is just marked up completely from what it was in Bob's Rules. The first, the first policy statement here, we added on that we were basing this on Bob's Rules of Order, which I think is fine, and he should get credit, because he's done a lot of work on this, and he did provide us an excellent, an excellent roadmap. Here's an example of some of the changes I found in this rendition that we created from Bob's Rules. Under basic principles, number one, the role of the presiding officer is to ensure, in Bob's Rules, it said "ensure," not just encourage. It should be to ensure. And that's one of the things that he said that was most important, so I think we should change the word "encourage" to "ensure."
Where are you getting that? Mine says "ensure."
This one says "encourage."
The role of the, of the presiding officer?
Which one are you looking at?
This pink one.
The pink one is mine.
Oh.
And, and they're not going from that one now, they just-
We're going off the one.
The white one?
Yeah. And personally, I'd rather just do it like Bob's Rules with those, you know, but-
Well, is this the one, is this the right, is this the one you like?
This is the one that I worked from, from the first rendition that we had presented to us, you know? And that's the changes I made in that, mainly that was formatting.
Okay.
But then this one has a lot more changes in it that weren't even in that one.
Well, and what we did was, you remember, we brought these, brought all these up, they were tabled for grammatical and spelling and such, so we all went through them, that's why they're different. We went through them to, not sure what it is that we needed to change, and kind of reformatted and changed them. So, if, if we didn't do it right, if this isn't what you're interested in, if this is, then we can do this one. It's, we just weren't sure-
The closer we are to Bob's Rules, the better, you know? Number two is totally different from Bob's Rules here. Because it says a city council meeting is for the purpose of carrying out the city's business by a majority vote. And in Bob's Rules-
Well, I think the-
It says, in Bob's Rules, the meeting belongs to the governing body, not the presiding officer, and not any individual member. And by majority, the body can control its own meeting. Now, that's a lot different. That, and that's the whole emphasis that he gave in the seminar we had at League. This is the body, the council, it's your meeting. The presiding officer is there to make sure that everybody gets equal time and equal treatment. And I think that's important, you know? So, number two, you see how different that is from what-
Yeah, and like I said, we could, if you're, if you like this one, the first one, with some of the changes, we can just throw this one out.
Well, there's so many changes to go through in here, just like you found a lot of them, Guy. And then I was comparing it to Bob's Rules, and I found a whole lot more.
Well, I just don't know that Bob's Rules are the be-all, end-all, and we were using Roberts Rules. And that's why I decided-
Roberts Rules are-
And that's why we decided to come up with a, a council meeting rules of order, kind of, something that worked for all of us. If you guys just want to do Bob's Rules, then I don't know, we need to go through all this and just, if that's what you want, Ramona.
It would be, and it's not just Ramona, it's, it's the whole council.
So you guys all want to do Bob's Rules?
I mean, it's, the whole council should decide, you shouldn't say, "It's just Ramona."
No, I'm not, Ramona, it wasn't important, I'm just, you're the one speaking, that wasn't, I don't want to ever assume what everybody wants.
I'd like the city manager to review Ramona's changes and incorporate them into Bob's Rules. But also speak with Allison to find out what, if there's any legal questions that are not, not handled there. That's what I would be in favor of.
Well, isn't this the one, Bob's Rules?
That's the, that's the first rendition we got from the staff, with the changes that I wanted to make in it, to make it more like Bob's Rules, because they took out all that wonderful formatting that made it easy to read, you know? Easy to look things up. That, that's the first thing that I think we should incorporate, because it makes it so much easier to use. And this will help all future councils. I mean, not just us, but anybody that comes on the council. It's gonna be a nice document they can look at, easily understand, easily reference, and it just makes it so much better, you know?
So what about the two of you, do you guys want to both adopt Bob's Rules, is that?
Well, and let me, somewhere in all that conversation, if there's anything that's not covered by Bob's Rules of Orders, it reverts to Roberts Rules of Orders.
Yes, it says that, it says that.
Do I remember that correctly?
Yeah. Definitely.
I mean, this is just a-
It's just a, yeah, guidance, not a-
Yeah, it's a shortened version and, and, you know, that kind of thing, the Roberts Rules of Orders.
So it's kind of, yeah, because like, you know, where, you know, Councilwoman McDonald had a few changes, which all seemed very good, I just don't know if we want to go from line by line here, you know, this is just, again, a guidance and refers back to Roberts Rules, that's just one kind of-
Well, I'd be happy with, if you're gonna call it the council meeting rules of order, which Dr. Becker has got these little headline thingies out here, and we've all read them. And then Mr. McDonald went through, and on two through five, and those other pages of this old one, convert these into this one, and bring it back to the council next meeting.
In other words, incorporate Guy's changes into this one that I had reformatted. I think that sounds like a good idea, and I'll take another good look at it, because I go through this word by word. I'm a wordsmith, I mean, I'm an educator, and that's what we do.
Because I've read this, and I've read this, and I think it was all pretty well covered, except I didn't catch Mr. McDonald's changes, because I, to me, I'm not a word, word person that does it that way, but he's good at it, and Dr. Becker's good at it, and I would be, I'd be satisfied with that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're in any rush.
Right.
There's no obligation to have this written for the next council meeting.
No.
I think we, that Ty and Ramona and Allison, you know, get together, get together with you.
I like that, okay.
That sounds good.
Sound good, so, okay, appreciate it.
That's fine with me, but I, I do want to emphasize that, and like on the definitions, the words that are being defined should be in quotes, you know, things like that. That'll just make it so much easier, and that was the most beautiful thing about Bob's Rules of Order that I noticed when I first saw them. And I do have a whole lot of notes, but we'll just get together.
Or if we're gonna use this one, if you'll just make notes on this one?
Okay.
Because I think we're gonna go back to this.
Yeah, I, I just made my notes on this one that you sent out to us, because I'd already done that, but I'll be glad to combine the two, I'll get that to you. Okay.
And then there's no hurry to get it back, so.
Okay.
When we gonna have it come up on the next, at the next meeting, though?
Maybe at our next workshop, maybe? Because I don't think we're gonna be ready to vote on this.
Not the next meeting, but you need to assign either, you know, say something that you're gonna have-
Kind of a deadline.
That's what, thanks for the next workshop.
Or you want to review it again at the next workshop?
I, I think we need to review it at the next workshop before we put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
You guys think so?
I'll keep this right in my, look at my file, I've got for Bob's Rules of Order.
She's a schoolteacher.
An administrator, that's worse than schoolteacher.
All right, sorry. Didn't quite get the right thing.
And then next is the vacancy policy, before we talked about that at the last meeting. And a few changes here, so.
So I think Ramona had some suggestions.
Yeah, I've gotta find my notes on that one.
Here's what she sent me.
Okay.
That helps.
And I was just curious, why did we change all this wording to, from nomination to appointment?
What's interesting is there's, there's two ways, again, it goes back to federal and state. So, what's interesting is in the, in the federal, let me find my notes on that, okay? So, in, in the federal, when it's associated with the president, the president nominates, and then it's appointed then through the Senate, so the Senate does the appointments. At the state level, it's associated with, the appointment is associated with a mayoral action. So, in other words, KSA 12-10, et cetera, et cetera, says, "The mayor appoints, subject to the confirmation of the city council." So it's which way, you know, whichever way you want to look at it.
And that is generally speaking to all appointments, like to the boards and committees. But this vacancy policy is different, because it's not just a committee or a board. And in the original policy that was written when this was first done, it said nomination, not appointment, because it's a different process, you know? And so I think we should change that back to nomination.
Like the president. President's powers.
There you go. And I'll just go through this, I don't know if I had all of these on my first one, because, see, this has changed since the first time we talked about this, and all these changes were made without us really talking about them, you know?
Well, and again, that's, that's our fault, I mean, because it got tabled, and we had like four of them, and they were all tabled at once for grammatical and things, so all, a bunch of us, myself, Allison, Jamie, we back, went back all through them, looking for grammatical and things like that, and that's why they're different. So, whichever way, you know, if you like the original one, you'll make some changes to it, great. If you like the revised one and want to make some changes to it, either-
Well, I'd like to go back to the one that, you know, this one that I have some pink changes. And did we say, I can't remember for sure, did we say we wanted to go back to 30 days and then make it, or 45 days and 75?
Yeah.
Is that how we wanted to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
And then the other thing, I wanted to delete this phrase on C, under Roman numeral three, policy, the one, two, there's two paragraphs there. And then on page, well, the next page, it says, "The mayor shall share all information provided by each interested citizen with all council members." And then I want to delete what was written in there that says, "And citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act." I want to delete that phrase, "And citizens in conformance with Kansas Open Records Act." Because that's thought totally apart. You know, that's always understood, that any time you do something, even though they're having a legal lawsuit about it with the state right now in the governor's office, that, that doesn't need to be in there, that just kind of muddies the waters. And we need to add at the end of that, in a timely manner, before the council vote. So this, this phrase should say, "The mayor shall share all information provided by each interested citizen with all council members in a timely manner before the council vote." To me, that's just logical, you know? And that, that should be understood. So, how did the rest of you feel about that?
I have no problem with that.
Me either.
Okay. And then, again, every time you see appointment in here, I just think you should say, like, for instance, this one that says, "The mayor will name an appointment to the open council position." I think that should say, "The mayor will recommend a replacement to the open council position." That's under confirmation of replacement.
What, what letter's that? What, what letter's that?
Uh, the heading is confirmation of replacement.
Yes, I got that.
And right there on A.
A, okay.
She's showing you on this blue sheet.
Okay.
It's not in there.
And then again, uh, I guess we should say within, within 30 days of the nomination, the council shall act to confirm the appointment.
You got 75 days left.
Okay. And that's where we, we're gonna have to think about this. I was thinking we had a hundred, I wanted to extend that.
To 120.
To 120.
We did.
But then you're at 165 and then you break state.
Your 75 and 30 is combined together. So you only have 120 days total.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, so we've gotta decide how we wanna break that up.
Well, it's, it's the, uh, 45 and 75 is 120.
Yeah.
We talked about that last time.
Right. And so do you wanna put 75 in here at this point?
You have to.
And then, in the first one, allow 45 days for interested parties to, interested citizens to submit their resume.
That's all we do.
And then, in the second one...
But, but, just to make sure. But let's say we get just a dynamite candidate that all six of us love, or five of us, since one's gone. On day 46, we can vote and he or she can come in. We do not have to wait until the end. But this gives us that buffer.
Right.
Right, which is kind of what...
Because if we can't pick anybody in the first 45 days, then you have 75 days left to get it done.
This gives us that buffer, yeah.
Right.
As long as by day 120...
We're done.
That seat is filled. If not, so.
I don't know what happens then.
Well, then we have to pay a lot of money.
And we can decide not to fill the vacancy because, uh, it's very close to the election time, you see?
Uh-huh, right.
But the council, somebody makes a motion, it's seconded, and they vote to do that, and that's perfectly legal.
And see, that's in here, too.
Yep.
And then on C, following down to the next one, if the takeout appointment and say, recommended replacement rather than appointment. And then the rest of that, uh, is not confirmed by a majority of the city council, the mayor will, uh, recommend a second individual rather than appoint. Because technically, they're not, he's not appointing them, he's recommending them.
Okay.
Okay? And so it's pretty much what I have on that sheet. And then on D, "The mayor shall not vote until the confirmation, except in conformance with the charter to break, break a tie." Well, I wanted to note that in the old policy, the mayor didn't vote at all. Even if there was a tie, it didn't say, it said, "The mayor would not vote."
And, and the reason that changed is in Charter Ordinance 14, it states, "The mayor shall preside at all meetings of the council and shall have the casting vote when the council is equally divided."
That's just in general.
That's why that changed. Yeah.
That's in general. But I noticed that when they made this original policy, they specifically stated in here that the mayor was not going to vote for this. For whatever reason.
I don't think he can. Not on replacing a, a council person.
If it's a...
Yeah, I think you just said it's under the charter. Did you not say that?
Yeah.
But as a general thing, it's, it's under a different heading than replacing a, a member of council.
I don't know why they wrote the, the original policy like that, but I just wanted to say.
Because the charter's gonna supersede the policy.
But that Charter 14 has nothing to do with replacing a, a council member.
Just on the vacant, on the vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Which way?
D. I don't think the mayor should be able to, uh, make the decision. If there's, if there's two and two, then I think the council, somebody makes a motion and council votes again.
Until the council...
I don't think the mayor can vote for, for a council member. But I'm not sure on that.
Because somebody will change.
Cause the assumption that it would be the mayor would vote cause he's putting that name forward, so.
Yeah, you'd know the mayor would vote in affirmation.
Yes.
So it's up to you guys, however you...
I'm not against what you, what you just said. Uh, I think the mayor should not have a vote because if he or she is, uh, you know, nominating somebody and it's a tie vote in council, well, you know, the mayor's not gonna vote against his own nomination.
So we just revert back to the original policy?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. See, that was an easy one.
And there's no changes from, from this one, the, this one. So I would recommend just using this one that's, and add, for a moment, Dr. Becker's blue things and then, and take out the, uh...
Give me presidential powers.
The mayor shall not vote upon, uh, whatever it said.
Yeah, I think that...
And we'll double check, let's double check with Allison before, just to make sure of the state statute, or city charter, excuse me.
Well, if there's only three of them, it's three to two or three to three, three to zero. Cause there's...
I mean, four, before.
Before.
Yeah.
Give me two to...
But I don't think you can vote on a member, council member.
We just said that.
I'm not sure.
Final item!
I just wanna keep rattling here.
Uh, final item is marketing. Um, we talked about this, um, we mentioned this at the last meeting and I've asked Ty to give us an update. I know he has not been real happy with, and so thought we should share his time to talk about this with the, you know, we've hired a guy a few months ago. Um, we're coming in the spring season, so wanted to kinda get an update on where we are with the Central Park agreement that we had set with, with Jeff.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you putting on the agenda because I, really, um, council approved the agreement on, uh, July 14th of 2015, so it's been over six months. And in here, it says that the marketing company shall provide at least one spec home for the landing and the park. That, um, they would staff that with a minimum of four hours with one person. That they'd be responsible for the marketing, which would be newspaper, media, mailing, signs, those types of things. And, um, putting in the MLS and then meeting with me once a month. And really, um, the only thing that's been done is that lots were put in MLS. Um, I haven't, I've met with him maybe twice over the last six months. Um, all the houses that are under construction up here now, those are all YGAN houses. That was, the YGAN model there that's on the corner, they, they've been selling off of that, those other houses. So that the houses are going in are YGAN houses. So, uh, we've sent information for him to put together a plat map. Um, in fact, um, I just met with him last week and said, "We need that cause we've got a booth at the home show." You know, "We need to have that there." And, um, there's been no newspaper, anything like that, marketing. And so I ended up, when the mayor asked me about this, I called him and said, "Listen, you know, I've gotta meet with the council about this and I'm not very happy with, with the way things have been going cause I'm seeing nothing." You know, the houses up there are not yours. You're supposed to be putting in a house, a spec, two...
Yeah, then with all the momentum, he'd jump on this and write it.
Yeah, and he's, he's told me he's got a builder that's interested, but no plans. There's no basements being dug, you know? And, and if, if he wants to get something in the spring period of homes, I don't think he can now because that's gonna be in April.
Thursday.
No, the spring period of homes.
The period of homes is in April.
So essentially, you're saying he hasn't done anything since when?
Since July.
July.
Since July.
14th of July, 2015, let's get rid of him.
So those signs that we put up, wasn't that part of his...
Who put those signs up?
What signs?
The signs for the different neighborhoods.
Cause I, I, cause they're only on one side, remember?
Yeah, yeah, we put those up. Um, and just to help, you know, identify the neighborhoods and stuff.
Right, he's outta here, so...
So he hasn't done what he said he was gonna do.
No, so what I did was I met with him last week and he put together this, which I included in your packet, about what he's gonna do. And, um, he said that he would email me every week and tell me what's going on, that we would meet before the chamber meeting every month. That he's almost got his website done. He said that what he's doing is, he's, he's the type of person that wants everything perfect before he sends it out, but then if you, if you'll never get out because it's never gonna be perfect.
I think we had RFP. We tell this by buying an RFP from whoever is interested in, you know?
So do you think that hiring him stimulated YGAN to get busy and do all this stuff?
Well, we don't wanna go back there.
I don't know.
Do anything.
Cause it's ironic that all of a sudden...
Well, they actually, you know, they put in that model home and then people, because honestly, it's, that's very true. People need to see a model or spec. Cause they're not gonna just buy a lot in a picture. And so that really helped, you know, getting that done. And, you know, I think if he would get something in there, that would help because of the momentum going on. But he's not getting it done and so he has, um, what I'd like to do is...
He came to the state of the city. That was the first time I'd seen him. Which is what spurred this on.
Because I've kinda put him on notice and he's doing this, I'd like to give him a couple months to see if he can actually, cause he says he's got all this stuff and he's supposed to be bringing the plat tomorrow. Um, and what I'd like to do is to be able to go back to him and say, "Okay, you know, you've said you've done, I've talked to the council. If we don't see some new basements being dug and this stuff happening within the next couple of months, we're, we're gonna move."
So he's got 60 days?
And I can say the council is...
Get them down on him hard. Well, you know, I messed around with YGAN for too long.
I thought he had a wonderful plan. And then when I saw all these new basements and houses, I thought that was him doing this. You know?
Yeah, well, yeah.
And so I thought he was doing fine. So why did we wait so long to jump on his case?
He's soft-hearted.
Yeah, well, like I said, I talked to him, I thought, okay, there's no need to meet with him every month because...
In November, December, January, nothing really happened.
Yeah, the idea is to, you know, go through your walkthroughs and stuff. Well, he wasn't. So when I would talk to him, you know, shoot him an email and stuff, he'd say, "Well, I'm working on this, I'm working on that, I'm gonna get that to you." And so I was always being told that, okay, this stuff is gonna come. And, and then all of a sudden, I'm sitting here, you know, and I, and I actually started talking to the mayor about it before the holidays. I said, "You know, there's just, he's telling me he's doing all this stuff, but I'm not seeing anything." And before long, those houses are gonna be sold and we're gonna have nothing. And he needs to get something in the ground so that when those houses get sold, we got more construction. And so that's when the mayor said, "Well, you know, meet with him and let's talk about it at our next workshop and let the council know what's going on." I said, "I'll do that." And so that's why I got on to him and...
And what just happens, what I was hoping would happen, we'd all say, "Holy cow." So now you can go, this isn't Ty Lashford being in a meeting. But this is, I talked to the council, they're upset.
Well, I thought he was doing great, cause I saw...
Yeah. And like, you know, like I said, I knew that, I, I was giving him time cause I knew that he's gotta get a whole website developed and all that.
But wait, he's gonna be able to see some stuff in January.
Yeah, cause that's what he kept saying. He said, "Well, I'm gonna get some, uh, some holes in the ground in December." And so I thought, okay, well, you know, if you're working on it.
Ship out.
But then all of a sudden, here we are in December, nothing's happening. And that's when I started talking to the mayor and said, you know, um, I'm just, I'm not sure about this.
Okay, well, I think he had a great plan if he'd just followed through on it.
So, so 60 days, we need a follow-up and what do you guys think?
He's not a builder. He's not a builder.
But that was part of the plan, Diane, was he was, he had two or three lined up?
Warren Brothers.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. One of them was in Europe or something, if I remember correctly.
And that other lady that came, uh, YGAN, not YGAN, who was it that said they had Warren Brothers?
No, I can't remember.
But she backed out of the deal.
She was with Berkshire, wasn't she?
Yeah, Shire or something.
She backed out.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Did you guys see that big article on Sharp in the paper?
Craig Sharp.
Craig Sharp?
No.
Good guy.
He built out here years ago. In fact, he built all, practically all of Summit Hill, right? I, yeah, I remember the building.
When he built my house, I've got a question.
I don't know if he did years or not, but he, Craig, uh, Glass.
Dennis.
Dennis Glass and Craig Sharp built Summit Hill.
Dennis Glass built my house.
Dennis and Patty used to live out there.
I should say...
Patty's deceased and then Dennis is retired.
Cause Rob would come and do everything for her every night.
But I'll tell ya...
So what was the article about?
Oh, about how he's moving forward from, he was out of Andover. And he's still building...
Huh?
Augusta, I'm sorry. And he's still building, um, a lot of houses and he's using all these, uh, this technology from computers and stuff and putting all these houses together for people and they're loving it. I think that article was like about a half a page.
And the Business Journal had a big write-up on our Commerce Park last week. Real nice, Josh Hackford, real nice, so...
And I noticed Tryam is back. And he's got a house under YGAN and that's why he left in the first place. Cause he was mad at her.
Goes around, runs around.
And now he's back and I think that one, um, that side of the road has got a sole time on.
Yeah, yeah, the one he's building up there is sold. It's for somebody.
Yeah.
And, but he's got his house for sale. He actually lives...
That green one?
No, it's that big two-story that's right on the lake on the north side.
Oh, my gosh!
He's selling that one, so I don't know where he's moving to.
He's probably building himself a new house in Bel Air.
I don't know if it's in Bel Air. Haven't seen anything about that.
Eddie, what'd you say, what's the name of that guy? I'm gonna look up that article.
Craig Sharp.
Craig or Greg?
Craig.
Craig with a C?
Uh-huh.
S-H-A-R-P?
Mm-hmm. Sharp Homes.
Okay, I'm gonna look that up, too.
He's from Sharp Homes, or he was years ago. And he doesn't look like he's aged a bit.
Well, we'll have to find out.
Anything else we need to go over tonight?
Huh?
Anything else we need to go over tonight?
Oh, I thought you said Gil...
Oh, I have one thing. I'm sorry. You heard my phone go off. I forgot to turn my phone off. You know, while we're doing all this policy stuff, I wonder if we should put in there that no phones on the bench during the meeting. Because we've had several times, just like mine did tonight, of phones going off or click, 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 people texting during the meeting.
Yeah, um, and not just the bench, I think around here. The city attorney, the city manager. I, I think when you have a council meeting, we don't have to, the council does not have to be interrupted. We have had people at the podium and phones have gone off and, uh, you know, people respond to it. So I don't, I, I, I agree with you. I, I think no phones for anybody in, in the city council. You know, if somebody, a member of the audience has one, we, we'll just ask them to turn it off.
Yeah, see, I cities do not let you bring them in the building.
Okay.
I forgot to turn mine off tonight.
Wonder if we, what...
But we need a policy or we just need to, I, I'm... But we need a policy, or we just need to, I, I'm.
Or what if we just put a sign, you know, out there.
Just no cell phones for you.
Please turn your cell phones off, or something like that?
Because if you're in a, in a meeting, like a council meeting, most of your relatives or your friends know you're at a meeting, and if it's an emergency, they can call 911, the chief or the police can come.
Can wake up.
Come up and say, "Come in."
Actually, I believe, please don't quote me on this, but I believe there's a state rule that says, "Well, we're up there at a bench at any time." I know, I think all we've had it, if I were to get my phone out, and I know I have, well, okay, right now, just as I have a city council meeting, because I haven't turned it off, my wife texted me just now, see what she wants. But anybody can say, "Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see what that message is."
That's right.
And if I open it and transmit it from the bench, it is an open record.
Yeah. And see, that happens up here all the time, and it's very distracting to me. I just don't think that should be there.
Well, I hate the part where it's on vibrate and, and then, "Buh." What the hell? But I don't even bring my cellphone with me, so.
Many meetings open with a statement, you know, if you have your cellphone, please make sure you turn it off, because I know mine went off one time, and it was just because I had forgotten to turn it off.
Well, that's what happened to me tonight before you got here.
So, you know, I mean, we all can forget. We can make it his, his duty to announce that he has to turn his phone off.
If you go to the symphony, they spend several minutes saying, "Please."
Oh, that is, yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah. You cannot use a cellphone, turn it off, you know, and they, they have a long narration. I don't know how long it takes. I'm going to say two or three minutes probably, and they emphasize.
The Cellphone Concerto, or something like that.
Yeah.
Going to court, and that judge we had down there, he states, "No cell phones in the courtroom. Take them out, turn them off." And before I became a council member, I went to just sit in on the, the court thing, and a kid was playing a game, and he told the officer, "Go confiscate that," and he did not give a backdoor answer.
That was an expensive game.
So.
Motion to adjourn?
I, I think, let's do it. All right.
Okay. That's good.
And that's a good reminder, Ramona, and I.
Yeah.
I even.
What does she, what did Tristan mean by she has, do we use those passes? Oh, second year motion.
Oh, well, it's a workshop. We're good, guys. See you.
To get into the home show Thursday, those tickets that we got from Builders, Wichita Builders, or she said, "Come up and get your passes," but I don't know what she's talking about.
I think we have.
Yes, several people have exhibitor passes that you get in.
Multiple kinds of things. We'll have a badge.
It's like he's on Lanyard, I think.
Yeah, they get you in every day.
I see you and Pat on Friday.
Sometimes we're changing those off. So I think she's got it, that if you're, if you get exhibitor pass, it'll say exhibitor on it.
Yeah.
And then you leave it, and then she'll pick it up and give it to the next person. Or some people will get just a regular ticket, like a little movie ticket, and then you just get in with that, so.
Okay. Have we gotten any of these tickets? Have the council members been?
No, I think that's what, isn't that what you're saying, Betty?
The Wichita Builders Association.
Melts into your home.
Two tickets here.
I've got those, but I've already given them away, because I knew I was going to represent the city.
See, that's what I was going to do, because there was a couple of older people that wanted to go, and they didn't want to pay the $8.
Yeah. So we got tickets for everybody.
You do?
If you're working, we've got tickets for you.
So we come here from City Hall, pick them up.
So we just come here and get our pass?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.